At this time, I'd like to call forward. Thank you, thank you very much. Our meeting council for the 24 Ossili City Council, Mr. James Shea. Mr. Shea, it's great to have you here this evening. I know you've put in a lot of time leading up to tonight. You're working on the document, working with the planning department, with Mr. Geary, with the project team. So, I know you've spoken, I've spoken to our patients in these meetings, as well as some of my colleagues. I just wanted to give you an update to provide us, the lack of play, and to cover watching, your input relative to this particular LDA and improvements that have been made in your suggestion. I know you talked in particular about the council's role and its definition within this document, as well as the what-if similar verdict clause, I think is very important contribution to make. So, if you could please elaborate, we appreciate it.
My role as deputy manager to the Street Works Master LDA has been to advise the council, give reasonable advice on what the contract means. I don't negotiate the contract because when you're doing that, because your team, the mayor's team went by Mr. Geary, that's their job. But people know from experience, going through the Street Works, and on other similar projects, that ultimately, you're going to look to me for advice on what this is. So, my contributions are cast really in a manner of, I would say, I think in my experience, the city council, you might have questions about this provision. You might basically get to the bottom line quicker. And this deal is, this agreement is patterned after a while, based on that. But it's not, there are differences, there are fundamental differences. Some, it's simpler in some respects, because there's no tax deal, and that was a significant component in the so-called 6A contract for Mr. Conus' LDA. There's no such agreement here, this is purely at real estate taxes. Another, but a complicated factor, all of that land is coming from the city. In this case, the developer has bought a significant amount of land in advance, which is part of what these projects are about. They want to encourage people to invest and put these parcels together with city-owned parcels. But that changes, the leverage is a little different now, to be honest with you. They have alternatives, it's not a matter of saying, well, you can do it my way or our way. You know, we're going to keep our land and go away. They have their own land and encourage that investment. And I'm not just suggesting this wasn't a cooperative discussion with developers representatives, but really, that's part of the good and take. And I think Anne and others have talked about the intangible benefits of pooling the land to get better access to the garage, better, more attractive street frontage, and so on. So, that's, it's like a problem, but not completely. So, again, in terms of, I'm not going to negotiate business terms, dollars and cents necessarily, but I'd like to have clarity on what I think, what I've learned from you folks, are the fundamental interests of the city council, but really, the economic, the explosion. And also, that these deals evolve, and we don't want to contract away our legislative function. Future legislative function in this agreement, so there's, so basically, what I'm trying to do, in this contract, as in others, to make it clear where the city council will have a role in the future. For example, primarily, it's the guaranteed maximum price for infrastructure improvements. That's something that you haven't agreed to approve of that until we do that in the future. We make it clear that that's something that is reserved to you. As well, and that's, you know, GMP, guaranteed maximum price, not just for the garage, but also for other infrastructure on the site, is really your domain, and you will pass on that when that financing is before you. And again, that, those contracts will also impact other agreements. For example, the rent under the apartments, which is a fundamental, at least, what's the biggest provision is the rent. And that's going to be determined in great part by what you sign off on as the guaranteed maximum price for the garage. So, basically, I want to make it clear that you haven't contracted away those rights, and then you will exercise them in the future. The next general approach is I wanted to tighten up some of the performance requirements. What we don't want is to close on the land, have you sell your land, and then wait for something, wait indefinitely perhaps for something to happen. I made a lot of changes there. This is a very tight schedule. They've got to commence construction very shortly after closing on the deed. And there's no so-called force majeure. Remember, that's a fancy term for, it's not my fault, I'm late because of other reasons beyond my control. You know, they're going to be held to this, and they seem very anxious to go forward and certainly agree to those provisions. And part of that is something that is kind of agreed to, is to some extent, this deal, the reverters back for better advanced construction, as required in the agreement. It's also requiring the construction financing for the project to be in place prior to, at the time of closing. So, I'm pretty satisfied that that's taken care of. And in the final line, and this came up, this really went back to Street Works in a lot of ways. It takes a lot of optimism to be a real estate developer, but it's risky business. And sometimes, it just doesn't happen, and it isn't anybody's fault, or it's the market, whatever. We're not here to look for blame in the future. You need to protect the city from damage claims, monetary damage claims. I think this document, the changes were made to make it clear that you're not going to have any exposure if, for whatever reason, the project doesn't afford it. That was really important in the Street Works deal, where you could just kind of move on and not have a lot of drama about that. So, that's basically what we're talking about. And Mr. Geary, Billy is a negotiator, we've known him a long time before he was in this role. And he was very responsive to my concerns, as I think he was at all. Any questions?
Mr. Shea, anyone else wishing to, okay, councillor, Anne.
Thank you, Mr. Shea, and thank you for being willing to sit through this. I think that the chairwoman did a fantastic job at the beginning of this in terms of outlining specifically, you know, the merits of the proposal. And it really represents, and I think you kind of articulated the same way, that it really articulates exactly what we're trying to achieve, which was to create investment. And then to bring people into that sort of consistency, as opposed to them relying solely on zoning, and then working together with the city to achieve the city's end. There's no one here, in my, that I know of, that really wants this to fail, obviously. But it goes back again to something, so even as we approved the LDA around the original Street Works agreement, was that this, all we're concerned about tonight is that land disposition agreement and what's contained in that. And the bottom-line question is, in the event, hopefully not the case, but in the event of failure, or in the event things don't go quite the way with their plan, you believe the LDA has been constructed with the additions that, you know, you've made through discussions with the various councillors and the things in progress, that this is a solid document in terms of who controls it?
I think it's important, and that's my, I got to tell you the downside. And I've done that in this case, and it's two things. One, you don't want to have exposure to monetary damage, a project of his size, a little technicality, that kind of uncertainty is not risk-free in the state of the game. The second, you want to be able to move on. You don't want your land tied up, and you'll get it back, put it back in progress. And again, I don't think that's part of my role as a leader, and that's in this case.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Shea. All right, so, motion approved by councillor Forrest, seconded by councillor Harris. Any further discussion? All right, seeing that, Madam President, public.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Pro.
Yes.
Councillor Warner.
Yes.
Councillor Finn.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor Forrest.
Yes.
Councillor Lee.
Yes.
Councillor Doherty. President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members of the House.
Yes, councillor Forrest. Thank you. As a matter of personal privilege, if I may, I'd like to call forward the attorney for LBC, Mr. Daniel Bailey, for some comments. To follow up as to our discussion.
I will, Mary.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor Forrest, thank you, Madam President. My name is Anne Bailey, I'm a land use and real estate attorney in Boston, Arkansas, or in Pierce Avenue, LPL. My clients at LBC wanted me to take a couple of minutes and just express their thanks and appreciation for this opportunity. They're really excited about it, and they're very confident that they're going to be able to build a building, both they and the city of Quincy are very proud of. With us here tonight, we brought the whole team. We haven't done that previously, but, you know, we really wanted to show you a little bit of the strength behind LBC. So, with us here tonight, we've got Avi Schloss, who is the architect from the S&amp; consulting group. We've got our contractor, with whom LBC has done several other projects, and that's DF Prey, Scott Prey, and Armae Belbonci from there. We have Doug Hartman, our civil engineer from High Point Engineering, as well as all the principals and directors from LBC. We want to let you know that we will get to work immediately. As best as a basement could start as soon as tomorrow. We expect that the building will be demolished by the end of May. Work on the design of the drainage channel relocation has already started. That's the first element of any real construction here, is to get infrastructure addressed. So, I won't say anything further, it's late, you've been at it for a long time. But we just wanted to really thank you again, tell you how much the team is looking forward to participating in a great redevelopment of Quincy.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bailey, appreciate LBC's investment in our community, and look forward to developing your project. And I in particular, I'm looking forward to the demolition of the legged storefronts if they exist, it's going to be quite a transformation right on time, thank you. Thank you, councillor Forrest. Other councillor, Anne.
It's the thing, Madam President, I just want to say, I do think it's a good karma is that you're not handing out any commemorative plaques.
Councillor Kennedy.
Or Pence, Joe. I'd like to record this, yes, I want to.
No, you're welcome, thank you. All right, thank you. Further reports of committee, councillor Forrest.
We have pending in finance, two items. It's 2017-25, which is in order for the disposition of 50 Seville Avenue. And councillor Forrest, 2017-26, which is the appropriation of $775,000 for the acquisition of Greenleaf. Councilors, as you know, and our commissioner Heinz, who got out in front of us to the extent to give us the data that we needed. I distributed that to the committee one week ago today. So, with the consent of the body, I'd like to take that item out of committee.
Okay, motion to take out committee, the councillor Forrest, seconded by councillor Forrest. All those will take it?
Aye.
Councillor Finn, if I may. Very well, councillor Forrest is out, it has passed without a committee.
So, commissioner Heinz, I believe, is going to speak for us.
Good afternoon, councilors, excuse me, good evening, councillors, in this this afternoon. But they've been taken out of committee. I think we have a rather detailed memorandum that minimum was originally addressed to Mayor Coe when he charged me with trying to figure a way to preserve this property in the character of this corner of the neighborhood. My mind started racing, and I put it down in paper. So, I don't know that I can really say much more to you than what's in that memo, but for that the purchase price has been agreed to, they are still at the table, but they're ready to lock for $700,000. The additional $75,000 is for roof repairs, it's got a maintenance slate roof, which is leaking. It upgrades the electrical inside to make it more appropriate for office use with the technologies that are, that would be important in it. Councillor Forrest did have a meeting a few weeks back, or two weeks ago now. It was attended by about 18 or 20 people. There was one woman who was not pleased with the proposal. She didn't actually say she didn't want it, but she was questioning it, but it seemed like there was a larger issue. The others that were in attendance were wholeheartedly supportive of it, most especially in the immediate of letters, because they recognized that since spelled out in the memo that this building would be raised, and as a right to a couple of units in a townhouse, whatever. And given that the neighborhood is on the brink of going from a residential feel to a more multifamily feel in prominence of this particular corner, they're all trying to avoid that from happening. The purpose of the historical designation is spelled out in the post papers, is the uniqueness of the exterior architectural design, which is in a minor state of disrepair, nothing beyond repair. It would simply leave the administrative offices of the Public Buildings Department, which is said is just first amongst big buildings, the tradesmen and the shops would not be there. And when all is said and done, 50 Saville goes as it seems to be, with more than 50% of the cost of the acquisition. If we have green, people go right back into that funding. 50 Saville is a small house, it's in a terrible saving district here. Now, I understand that because of this location with the dual frontage, it's a fine degree for $465,000. So, I ask you, if you would please consider to do this, for both the preservation of that neighborhood, the preservation of it generally architecturally, and to help my department administratively be in one place and work more functionally.
Okay, thanks, yes, councillor Forrest. Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner Heinz did a great job presenting a neighborhood meeting. The historic preservationist, Diane, was quite impressed that you pulled up the MAFR records listing showing the property on the historic register. We do think that when we look at the architecture of our city, we have it all, and it's really important to preserve such an iconic building. When you look up and down Greenleaf Street, you see what used to be such stately homes have all been demolished, replaced by, how many residential units can you fit on this square footage? And I think it's really important as a community, and a part of Mayor Coe, for bringing forward such a creative use initiative. Being able to relocate Public Buildings Department for more efficiencies for your department, meanwhile, preserve a structure of that, and at first write it over, refusal on, otherwise, we know, would have been fine to develop that section of my ward. It's been very active in development, and I'm confident that would have been another one torn down and rebuilt with a high-density project. So, you were correct, the tone of the neighborhood was, please protect the integrity of our neighborhood. Let's move forward on this. I just want to be clear, tonight, the councillor Forrest, I know that our meeting had two parts relative to the sale of Seville and the acquisition of Greenleaf. Tonight, we are only talking about the acquisition of Greenleaf.
And we both are taking out committee.
There's two orders pending, two separate orders, both are just.
Okay, my apologies, coming in as two separate orders, my apologies, sorry. Okay, I guess we'll, I'll save my comment here. 2017, yeah, 26, I thought.
So, I mean, the way that I see it, and I don't want to complicate things, councillor Forrest, pending in the committee, wants to dispose of Seville Ave, the other one's to purchase Greenleaf Street. Item number one is connected to item number two according to the S Act. So, with that, I would assume that both are before the body. But if we take a sequential vote, we'll refer to the disposition of Seville Ave, and then we'll set before Greenleaf. But correct me if I'm wrong, the way I'm viewing the conversation is, they're not individual, one is the catalyst to the other.
My apologies on the confusion.
Oh, no, no, no.
The first one coming out of committee is the acquisition of Greenleaf.
No, the first one by, by number.
My apologies.
It's Seville. Forty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah, okay, here we are, we, 2017-25. That is the disposition of 50 Seville Ave. And then concurrently, 2017-26 is the purchase or acquisition of 74 Greenleaf.
Sorry, I'm still, I'm still drawing an LDA paperwork that I have every.
No problem, it's in the, it's in the little book like this.
Yes, that's buried over there too. No, I do appreciate councillor Forrest. I think as we talk about the Seville property, it's important to note that it's not. So, I'll be supporting both matters, I guess, just to clarify my remarks. And relative to Seville, I just want to clarify, the Victorian property that was previously utilized and occupied by all the buildings will remain a city municipal building. That is a building that was actually relocated, the high school originally was constructed, the original City High School, and, you know, has been maintained. As you look forward, next door is more of a stucco 1950s-era residential home that no longer, has exceeded its useful life as far as for municipal purposes. So, I think just to, the questions that are coming up from the meeting, it's what about the Victorian? People are very concerned, and it's great for me to hear, and the historic preservationists out there, we are doing what we can with those architectural gems within our community, so, thank you. Sorry for the complications.
And thank you for pointing that out, as there are actually two structures on Saville Ave. This is the one that's being disposed of, the beige colored stucco one, which attracts other residential ones. The yellow grand Victorian, it looks like the one in that, I think the film helps, is not proposed to be disposed of.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Finn.
Thank you, Anne, and I know these, these two, both these orders are kind of intimately tied together these times, but I guess the key thing is, the motivating factor in all of this, however, is you feel that this current space that you have is inadequate to your needs, for your administrative offices. I say that would be equally as important as the preservation of the structure of Greenleaf. Preservation of the structure of Greenleaf. But in terms specifically of what your needs are, have you had any intent to, and you attempted to outline exactly what those needs are for what you require?
I have, and in fact, there's a very crude flow plan, I included the materials that was provided, it's done on the RAPD providing itself, and this Joe Shea will tell you I should not play engineer, which I do all the time. So, that leaves, I. Most people tell me I shouldn't be a lawyer. So, there's a very crude layout of the location of the offices within the building, and by person, by initials, but there's additionally, there's room to grow. There's a clear story, third floor level, which is traveling, which would be great for the plans table, the building blueprints, both for review for new construction, and the ones we have with existing structures. Get the big table, lay them out, set up, balance them on the kitchen table, like that.
Just my basic concern with all this, both, and it relates both to the disposition and the acquisition, shouldn't these really be subject to 30B requirements?
They are.
Have you, so, did you blood out for advertising?
Well, the first step of 30B disposition is a complex declaration of being surplus available to disposition. So, then, 30B process will now begin, assuming a recommended positive vote. On the Greenleaf, 30B is applicable, but unlike disposition, which does not have unique, there's no such thing as unique disposition, as anybody can buy. Conversely, there is a concept under 30B that's called unique acquisition. And if you state your case to the Attorney General's Office, by a letter, determining the reason and justification for a unique acquisition, they can sign off on it and give you authority. But again, the first step of getting their authority is approval by this body authorizing the acquisition. The next step goes to the Attorney General's Office.
This is kind of complicated by the fact that they are kind of tied together.
No, because it has the appearance, I mean, here's the issue that I have, okay?
We're supposed to be here to ensure that the taxpayers are getting the best buy. And you're making a very compelling case, how this is just a very convenient type of thing. But essentially, I don't see how, in terms of an acquisition, I understand that you're saying that it's, you know, this unique circumstance, but have you actually prepared that letter or the list for the set of why you think this would fall under that exception of 30B?
I've got enough, I know it, and it would be populated mostly by the information that's in the memo that we filed. But I didn't see any case there, I think it's the case I'm looking for is, when people are asking me, is this the best use in terms of establishing, going in, and rehabbing a building to meet one of the very specific needs or administrative needs of the agency, the public agency that's engaged in this? The whole purpose of advertising and putting out is to find out, again, if there are better offers out there, and better things available, and that they're usually not intimately tied into some type of a rehab issue specifically. But that may be the case, that you think makes this into that kind of a unique exception to the 30B? Well, I don't know, because I haven't seen any, I saw the memo, but I hadn't seen the description of what case you're going to make. Yeah, the good part of this particular structure, and I have visited it numerous times, is that they're large, rooms with large windows and high ceilings. You set up the dome division, go in, and do a gut rehab on this place. There's some add-on bathrooms that need to be removed, and it's sort of done terribly. And there's some cracked plaster.
Yeah, but when the purpose of advertising, your needs, and putting that out there is, theoretically, if it's advertised, the proposals come back, you could find your needs met at roughly half the cost of what you're proposing here. I'm just speaking theoretically, I don't know that. But that's the purpose of going through this advertising type of process. Now, again, it seems like part of the complication here is, is two objectives, and somehow neatly said, oh, okay, well, this all works good for everybody. But the question is, at the end of the day, right now, for us, is, does it actually work best for the taxpayer in the circumstances?
If I may agree that it's complicated by the preservation piece, but the uniqueness of this and the funding sources is critical. This fund of money is not funded by real estate taxes. The money that's to be appropriated is a fund that's specifically set up under the state law, that the proceeds from prior sales of real estate is deposited into. And it can only be used for these capital purposes, it can't be like bill, it can't, you know, do that type of thing. So, that's money that's not funded by the real estate tax bill. If we're to go to market and put in our yield, looking for general whatever class office space, those capital monies could not be extended for that. And that rent or purchase, or whatever it would be, would come off of the taxpayer, the local taxpayer, out of the. that built it, out of the general fund or the bonding appropriation.
So, yeah, that's interesting. I'd like to learn more about that. Again, I just, and again, you're running on the idea that this is a unique property requirement. But I guess the other thing is that, as I understand it, that one, we need a written determination. And Mr. Chairman, the question I have is, you know, I'd like to see these things fairly firm in a way before we vote, but a written determination that advertising won't benefit your local jurisdiction because of these inequalities. And, you know, again, and I think that, you know, there's a case probably could be made about how it will satisfy that. But I guess the other question is, is that, that under this, that any unique property acquisition, you have to file disclosure with the beneficial interest with D.C.A.M., is that...
Correct. To make sure there's no city employees, there's not insider data.
Correct.
All elements are considered to be in the acquisition, those would be applied. Thank you very much, Mr. Daniels, I appreciate it.
Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of questions on the finances. So this has to do with both properties. For the first one that we're disposing or sales, essentially, is there any mortgage on that? Is there anything remaining on that, or do we own it outright at this point?
The city took that in the early seventies, I believe, through a donated process for office space to the schools at the time, because it was a Queens High School. So the city owns it outright. Any bonding that would have been done back in the seventies is long since paid off. There would have been a twenty-year bond.
Okay, and then the second one is for the property that we believe that we're going to be purchasing. It says here that the fund, the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand would be transferred from the reserve of sale real estate fund. Are we going to take out from that fund the outright purchase price of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand? Or do you plan on taking out an amount from that reserve to enter into a mortgage? What's the plan on that?
It would be the full appropriation of the seven seventy-five. And independently, the proceeds for the sale of Seville, whatever they are, would independently, not as one deal, would go back into that account. So the two stand alone, accounting-wise and legally-wise, they're two separate closings. And one's not physically attached to the other. But it wouldn't be a bonding issue, it would be an appropriation of the seven seventy-five from that fund.
All right, maybe if you could remind us, Madam President, we honor, how much do we have on that fund as of today without the sale and purchase of these two properties?
Currently, there is eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the account.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Counselor Paul.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. The, we're kind of just talking about both, so I don't know what happened. What would the property be used for that we're selling in the future? And what would we just pay, would we use one?
The one on Seville Ave?
Yeah.
You would just put it out there, it has to be an RFP process, it can't just be a sale bid. And whatever criteria the city puts on it, I suggest it would be it's the highest price to achieve. That's the simplest of criteria, and that's all we really need to do. You could put any other restriction in, whether it be, you know, whether it's restored or replaced with a single-family home or no more than a two-family home. You can condition the disposition process through the RFP, however you should choose.
And what's the administration's intention?
Highest price.
So we'll let anybody do whatever they...
Quite frankly, if you're the first to raise that issue, it runs through my mind, when I go there, would it be fronted to the back street where there's such a great deviation? You could pull into the back street and park underneath whatever structure is built. The one that's, the structure there is really in poor shape. It's been all, it's terrible the last twenty years. My opinion, and I've done this before, it would not be worth rehabbing that building. It would be, it would be a knockout, whether it be a single-family home again or a two, whichever. It'd be pouring good money out to bad on that structure.
You need to save it.
Yes, if you were to recondition it, save that structure.
So I'm, so I'm just curious, is the intention, so we're going to put it out there in an RFP process? And all we're going to say is we're looking for proposals that would achieve the highest and best use, right?
Consistent with zoning and municipal laws and all of that.
Well, that's what I want to get to. So, you know, if a private resident decides to sell their house, they can put the same restrictions on, right? Let's just say property, not house, right? They can put the same restrictions. I'm only going to sell it to someone who's going to, you know, do X, Y, Z. They may not sell it. But then, say, for instance, a developer comes along and says, well, you know, I like this location, it's downtown, and, you know, I think I can be some parking in the garage about the street or something like that. I think, you know, twenty apartments would fit there. I got a little plan for a little building. But the zoning doesn't work. So in a private transaction, what would happen is, in most cases, the developer then would buy that parcel with a contingency for permitting. And then they would go through a permitting process, or in various variances, or site review that they would need to permit their proposal, their vision. So in this particular instance, we're not, we're not a hands-off property owner here because it would be an administrative body, maybe the zoning board and the planning board that would grant an permit and any variance for any proposal that was inconsistent with the zoning. So how would the city, one, handle a contingency on zoning? And two, what legal ramifications would that have? And the basis of my question is, from the development that I see as a ward councilor, when a piece of land goes for sale and it's tear-down, I don't think once I've seen someone come in and say, I'm going to build a single-family, right there on that single-family lot. No, they come in and they say, I'm going to build four townhouses, six townhouses, you know, a hundred and eighty apartment units. So why would we think this would go any separately than every other transaction that seems to be happening, at least in West Quincy? I don't know about the rest of the city, I suspect similarly. Your thoughts on that?
I do not believe we would be compliant with the law if we put it to market and said, don't worry about zoning, I'll take care of it. Especially zoning, it's quasi-judicial, it's just not appropriate, we couldn't have put into it. I would suggest we don't entertain contingencies, anything, a financing contingency perhaps. But anything relative to zoning or promise of permits or favorable wing from the billing department? Absolutely not. They buy something, they zone it, and after the deal closes, we're out of it. If they, as an individual property owner now, want to come and make the case of safe soil to bargain, feeling, and what else would have to do with, have added? But we certainly wouldn't go to that far, it wouldn't be appropriate. We have no reason to.
Right, on the other hand. But if our goal is highest and best, wouldn't we then be limiting ourselves? I mean, I'm just theoretically discussing, I'm not saying that it makes sense to do that there, which is why, I mean, so folks that I talk to... Right, so folks that I talk to, you know, and we do these community meetings, and usually the seller of the property is there, as well as the proponent, who has it under agreement upon a contingency of permitting. And the first step is an enablement meeting, and folks always say, you know, why can't they just do a single-family house there? And the person you don't hear from is the person who's selling the property, because they're getting more money because the developer is proposing something other than a single-family house, which could have been that.
More money if it goes through.
Right, because they're going to get more money if it goes through. So I'm having a hard time separating the two roles of government here. One in being the seller, who wants to achieve highest and best, as you said, which would be what our request is for. And then also from our role in permitting and, you know, neighborhood protection.
When I had to pursue highest price offer, it was with the, you see my mind, the understanding of in compliance with current zoning. I took it to mean, would our RFP say, we're going out here for highest price, but you can put no more than two units? I wasn't going there. We could do that, I mean, it's residency, I believe. But my belief was the highest price we could achieve under the current zoning without relief would not help you squat.
The order before us, twenty seventeen dash twenty-five, doesn't say that though, right?
It doesn't, it just makes it fail to disposition, and then it'd be subject to terms and conditions.
Point of order. I just want to let the record, for the record, clarify. The lot of land, yes, this, the lot of land is four thousand, six hundred and seventy square feet. It's pre-existing, non-conforming in existence. So pretty much any application of a court order is going to be...
Point of order is, it's not a point of order.
It's not a point of order.
You're talking about development. You're talking about...
You'll get the microphone, Mr. Attorney.
All right, you just, all right. Counselor Paul, are you finished?
No, I'm in the fourth, in the middle of a conversation with the person. If there's a point of order, just tell us something.
You're opposing development that would not be allowed by lots of...
We have a fourth.
All right, go ahead. Counselor Paul.
There is another point of order.
Okay.
That's it, that was...
So we blew it out, we blew it out of order, and we'll counsel before we can speak after.
I believe you, I don't have a claim, I believe you're certain. All the terms and conditions, terms and conditions in the best interests of the city.
Right, that's one of those, so it's such a disposition shall be on...
Would my proposal be the RFP, you know, it's based on price consistent with current zoning and no contingency. Perhaps it would allow mortgage contingency like any other purchase. But finance contingency, no permitting conditions.
Which is what I have highlighted in that language, is such disposition shall be on such terms and conditions required by the mayor and by the law that are in the best interests of the city. Right, so again, we drive it in, that's why I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to define what the best interests of the city is here in two different ways. It seems like we have to wear two different hats.
May I respectfully suggest that as part of your vote, making available disposition, if you have such a restriction in mind, you can addition your vote that way?
Well, it's on my warrant, I'm not going to put a restriction on it. But, you know, again, that's the tenuous position I find myself. As a ward for councillor, do I want to, these two inconsistent propositions, potentially inconsistent propositions, best interest of the city? Because it's two interests, really. I have trouble, I'm really only looking at one. And I'm not the ward councillor, so I'm not looking at the other in terms of this. But I just wanted to flush out kind of some of the issues that I saw in relation to...
I understand the trend, what you're discussing, respectfully, I don't see it as inconsistent because...
Potentially inconsistent.
What would be doing the RFP would be the highest price offered under the current zoning without relief. That's the intention of going for this.
So with my fiduciary obligation and duty to the taxpayers, how, why would we limit ourselves to that? When every other property being sold, liquidity is being sold for highest and best use without limitation?
Because any other property in the city, the seller's not, not the city. The city having the command, or being constituted of the zoning board, the licensing board, the planning board, all the others, we cannot make that recommendation to them that they're all separate products.
No, I get that, but I don't think a seller does that anyways. And a private seller doesn't say that they're all separate products.
We can't entertain that. We can't go there. It's the highest price under today's zoning. We can't say, you know, give us some more, we'll take care of your products. We just can't do it. Especially the zoning, as I said, it's quasi-judicial. It's a body of state, of city people acting under state law in a semi-judicial role.
So you're jumping to the kind of the worst case scenario, which is, I would have gone there with this discussion, which is the wing, where you nod, nod, like, well, okay, you buy this, and maybe there might be twelve units there. But theoretically, again, you, someone buying it could say, I would like the opportunity to go through the permitting process with a contingency. And then if I get it, I get it, if I don't, I don't. But your, but what you have jumped to is the reason why we wouldn't do that, because we would never be able to, almost with a straight face, I'm not saying, you know, inappropriate, it would be tough to defend that we weren't somehow in cahoots with the proponents because arguably the city itself controls the development process in a permanent...
If that RFP had a permitting condition in it, a contingency in it, I would agree with you. There's no way you could sell to any jury that we weren't in cahoots. So we can't have those conditions, those contingencies. Real estate, like his favorite deal, no contingency.
Right, so how, how long have you been a ward of the city? Prostate change, yes, right?
The latest, it was just ten, the sheets and failure.
The latest in current...
Yes.
Okay, a prostate, right, it's not a trick question, but I'm going to get to it some. So how, I don't recall seeing, since I've been on the ward, a little bit less than even administration, I don't recall seeing a seller piece of property that wasn't, I mean, we've done the LDAs, we've done a series of LDAs, but that was when something kind of, essentially had already gone through the permitting process, which was the COC process, and they were told, yeah, you can do this, now you have to go, we have to dispose of the land through the council, when there's already a plan that's, for lack of a better word, stamped approved by the city in some respect, mostly the mayor through the COC process. Can you recall a parcel that we've sold, unlike the LDAs, that we just straight sold with RFP?
It was a scrap parcel or an economic remainder down at Ford Street, where it had been a church, there was an office building, they just finally finished jacking it up. It was city land that under Kylie, thirty years ago, they leased for parking when they had redevelopment, and never paid the lease. And that's one of the deals I fought against, crack and machine space. We sold a scrap piece of parcel on Spring Street. Back in the day, somebody built the house that was actually over the property line. So there are small and very good parcels that were sold off. I remember doing one down around the old house next school area, where we specifically put on it, we joined to the next parcel that could be built on. It was just trying to make the architecture type thing, so we have a condition in the past.
Right, so in any of those properties, were they sold with the thought that they would become something? I mean, we, as you were talking, you were talking about kind of scrap parcels, we did something similar on the Old Grove Terrace, where we essentially disposed of a legal right that we had, I don't know what it means on that one, but when it's, have we done? What you're referring to seems like it's economic, I don't mean economic scrap, where it's land that had no value beyond what it was to a dealer. Have we done that? I see it wasn't here, yes.
My coach, you suggested, I recommend you the sale of Chapman Street, Wallaston. The Dawes', you didn't say this one, but the Dawes' chain, which was a rival, we took it out of the trust. What was the other one you said?
Central Middle School.
Huh?
Central Middle School.
Central Middle School.
Okay. Well, see, I didn't go there because that requires zoning, really.
So tell me a little bit more about that one. So it requires zoning, how do we...
I was not involved in that deal, I can't speak to it.
Yeah, but it needed zoning, okay? And we sold the parcel, how would we, how do we sell that to the jury?
Not involved, I didn't have it.
You'd have to sell it. All right, well, I mean, this proposal, this proposal kind of brings forth many questions that I have, but I mean, you've answered.
It does, it's good.
Form, I appreciate that, but, you know, because this, someone who buys this, unless it's a neighbor, and there's what, two or three direct debaters?
One.
One direct debater, so unless they buy it to make their parcel bigger, someone's going to buy this and do something with it, I mean...
Correct, but it's, somebody, as you previously pointed out, it's not a large parcel, it's only part of six hundred square feet.
Right.
It's not a whole lot to handle.
Unless you go for a variance, but so, which again, we're not going to be a part of it. It doesn't mean that that's not what's going to happen. That's why, when I look at that, anyone who's going to buy it is going to buy it to do something, right? So arguably, because that's what people pay money to do, right? I mean, that's why I was going down that road with you, because it'd be a non-conforming lot for something that someone wanted to build, for anything at that size. I mean, you know, you could put an EZM in there, you could drive to an EZM at that. As residency, you could, I can think of no economic value, but... Now to the fund itself, we could use the Community Preservation Act money relative to Greenleaf, would we not?
We could.
Okay, but we're not doing that because we're using that money for other things.
And because this fund of money is there, and its only use is such capital uses, whereas what the community preservation are the uses.
Right.
So if we use community preservation, this money would still be in the account.
God, you could buy, you could buy St. Mary's School with that money, right? Got it, you could buy, you could buy St. Mary's School with that money, right?
Any capital purchase.
So you could buy the St. Mary's School with that money, right?
A small portion of it.
Right, right, basically, that's the price. You could buy the properties that are contemplated for the Ward One project, for the, say, in around the Maritimes, that are going to be, you could use that money for that. But instead of using that fund for those two purposes, those two purposes are contained in the capital improvement bond, which is taxpayer money. So I get what you're saying when you, when you said, you know, in your memo, that this isn't taxpayer fund money that can be spent on something else. But when you choose to use this fund, and you prioritize this purchase with this fund, you then utilize money that is gone and can't be used for two other projects, which we're asking the taxpayers to pay for. So it's, I mean, we've been discussing up here, and one of my colleagues from the other side of the well, and I say that because I can't remember which one I'm saying.
What was it?
I had to tell you, but it's, you know, when we're up here, we have to balance our needs versus our wants. So I appreciate that, you know, that's a great argument, that, well, this is the only type of thing you can do with this fund that has nearly a, you know, has a significant amount of money in it. But we can also use that money for other things, which we are using taxpayer money to do. So it's a, it's a needs versus wants, it's a, what, what pool of money are you taking resources from? And to what diminishment of projects that you could use that money for? So, I mean, if we use this fund, you know, assuming we got the $400,000, if we use that, you know, a half million dollars in that fund to purchase St. Mary's or purchase the properties relative to the Maritime project, Maritime's a project, we, we we wouldn't then have to ask the taxpayers to cover the bond debt for that. So it's a great idea to have a fund like that, go ahead, fire away. By the way, this is one of our nicer interactions, if you notice, so far, so good.
Yeah, everything's all real.
I'm trying really hard.
And one aspect of the Greenleaf purchase that differs from the other parcels that you described purchasing with the same funds, and that is that this is not a permanent home for any city office. Right now, my apartment's worth a $3 billion, but I told you. But the mayor's vision, and part of the study for the municipal complex and public safety headquarters, is to have municipal office in there, which would include on the brown floor of Broad Street side, public buildings department. So this is
I don't know that I knew that.
Okay. I shared that with you now.
Yeah, I, I, it's referred to as the public safety headquarters, I thought that's all. I may have missed a line from someone along the way.
The designing RFP is out there, and they're studying, and the feasibility of all that, so what the right term that we seem, the vision and the bigger head perhaps is.
So arguably, we could use this fund to purchase whatever land, wherever it's determined, and that public safety headquarters, right? If it's not going to be done at C Street.
Like my credit card, I could use the same money for five hundred days.
Right.
But the point being, that Greenleaf Street is not a permanent home. So it solves my space needs for the time being. It solves the knockdown redevelopment in that particular high-profile corner. We restore the outside, fix the building paint, fix the leaning roof. And when we're done with it, we can sell it, that money goes, the money goes back into the fund, the property goes back out on the street, it goes back in the tax roll, but we can put a restriction on it. Being the owner, when we sell it, we put a restriction on it that it can't be knocked out. So we achieve our historic preservation goal.
That's not in the, the offer, is it?
No, because it's not before your consent.
What's up?
Selling it to the other.
Right, it could be the other. In your request of buy, you could say for a period not to exceed X number of years, at which point it would be resold, the proceeds would be deposited into the same, yeah, you could, this order, 2017-26, couldn't say that.
Correct.
But it doesn't.